Migrants and. This is just something I've heard about a person that moved out here from the suburbs of Exalantia to live here, which was his hometown where he wanted to move back to. This happened a few years ago. That person is concerned migrant because if you move either for work or to improve your living conditions, according to Mr. Webster, you're a migrant. So it's people look down their nose at migrants because they're hypocritical, I would say. They don't understand what the word means or who can be a migrant. I guess our governor would be considered migrant because she moved in to the Lansing to be the governor. So I guess she'd be considered migrant also. But, and I guess if you look down your nose at her, Berry Street. I think if, if Tifa was to give Berry Street $250,000, which they're willing to give to somebody else, half of Berry Street is in the Tifa district. But Tifa seems to be a little one-sided about how they feel about people. It's just like I was talking about migrants. If you're not in the downtown central area, they want your taxes, but they don't want to give you equal support. And there's businesses on Berry Street that should be able to get their $250,000 as well as the people on Broad Street. What's the difference? They're all Tiffin, they're all spending their money to Tiffin, which like I said, it's another group of people that don't give equal rights. Homeless, this is for Mr. Soha actually, doesn't feel that Old Big Boy is a place for homeless. I would like to know where he thinks in Hillsdale would be the perfect place for the homeless. You know, nobody wants it in their backyard, but if you got your, if you're saying that that's not a good place, then name the place. Safety Committee. I know they had a special, I know my time's up. I know they have a special meeting for the police calls at the, at the beach. And lately they've been having a lot of police calls, let's say North Monroe Street. People in the street, open containers, parties, but yet they haven't had a special meeting. I don't understand that.
Thank you. Do you ever get to not be a migrant?
Can I talk?
If you move at one year older than a migrant, the rest of your life.
James Under Thomas, 2200 Bard Street.
Oh shit, I'm sorry.
I can wait.
I apologize.
That's alright. Anyway, James Under Thomas, 2200 Bard Street. I actually live pretty close to Big Boy. And I actually live, my property, the north end of my property is actually directly parallel to Greenwood or Greenville Boulevard where Drew's is and where the apartment complex is. And you know, one of the reasons I've become passionate about the Camp Hope issue is because what I see at my property every day. And I see a person here who has a brother who's my neighbor, I see a person who's my neighbor, and I see a person who ran up and down my road on a pretty regular basis that I noticed for a while. Or maybe the hill got too much. It is a big hill. So I know there are better places for it. That's probably 15 to 18% of the county's population lives in that little bubble there with the four apartment complexes and the residencies there. Putting transitional transient housing there where everybody lives is just, it's not a good idea. I know a property off 12 in Cipio Township, which is unzoned by the way, Cipio Township is an unzoned municipality, which the owner is trying to sell. And he is very kind man, and he is, he is very in tune with the unhoused issue. And I'm sure he would offer them a line contract. I gave him the lead on that property about six weeks ago. There's also the former Connie Pro House, which is down what at Camden? And that, that's what's, I want to say it's 28 different apartments or something like that? That, that property's changed hands a couple of times. Jack got up and left. I do want to make this clear, I respect the heck out of Mr. Connie. So I just wanted to point that out. Like that's why I'm here, is because I'm retired and I spend a lot of time on my property and I see what goes on. And I see what goes on across, in the woods across the street. And I see what goes on up and down the street. And I see what goes on on Greenwood Boulevard or Greenview Boulevard. And it needs to stop and thank you for stopping. There was for a time some talk of negativity in this room, on this council, in this building. I was a public servant for a long time. I coached for almost 20 years. NCAA, MHSAA, all the As and levels. One of the things that makes your job really hard as coach is when players or parents or officials or spectators are acting out, causing problems, and the athletic director won't enforce the rules. It makes your season toxic. It makes it absolutely impossible to do your job. And if I were in the position of Mrs. Thomas, and by the way, no relation. If I were in that position, I would be very frustrated that I had put together two pages full of in-depth information and three people on the council just ignored it. And that's what I've got to say. Thank you for your time.
Did I do it again? Thank you.
Can I come? Okay, great.
Ice cream time.
Just three minutes. What I do, I correct, I do a lot of food manufacturing. And what I want to do is bring out ice cream plant in Hillsdale. And I've already looked at behind the bowling alley, this would be a good place to be in the city. Okay? Right now I've developed a lot of concepts and I own several, which I want to give to the city. Because I'm almost 80 years old. Unbelievable. And so it's time to give up and move on as my days are short. So one of, one of the things I created was Macanoy Island Creamery for the island. And I developed a lot of ice cream concepts for that. And I own the names. I own that name and that's going to be part of your people down here if you're going to want it. I own the name Buckeye because my, my brothers are from Michigan, my dad is from what's we're calling here, Hillsdale County. And my mom was a teacher back in the 30s on that. My dad created a lot of concepts before the war. And basically he designed a lot of things for, for food. What I want to do, the Buckeye concept is I own it, I created the buck, a buck, a buck, it was a, a liner and peanut butter on the inside, or we had other things on the inside. And they're about to figure out, okay? Now, that one I would bring here because what I found out, I, I grew up in Columbus, Ohio. Okay? Where I was a football player, okay? And then my parents moved here. And so, kind of Columbus guy thing. So I own the name Buckeye for ice cream on that. And I want to bring it here. Here's why I want to bring it to you. Did a little study, found out that the Indians in Michigan created the Buckeye name. I can't believe it. In fourth grade, I said Buckeyes and this, this, this in Columbus, okay? So what I want to do is build a, build this plant and we could probably do, you know, a lot of ice cream here. Then we can bring another concept here for fluids, for, for, for different programs that we've designed a lot of new programs for. So this one I want to bring to Hillsdale. Because my mom taught in, in this, in our program here back in the 30s, my dad was going to college here, my brothers went to college here. I was going to go to college here, but they said, we'll send you up to, we'll send you, send you up to what's we're called. And so I just stayed up there for about three years.
Thank you, Mr. Requith.
Wait a minute.
Thank you.
Let me keep, let me just keep calling the, thanks. I think I can bring a lot of money to this program here for Hillsdale.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, I want to, I want to meet you. I want to meet you and you, you're the, you're the college people.
Thank you.
Sit down with me, okay?
We're happy to talk.
I just don't want to have to take it to what you're called or my dad.
Thank you.
I want to keep it here in Happy Dale. Okay.
Scott Press, Word Four. Just a simple request for the sake of many people I know. I ask that the council and for Mr. Fry himself establish a clear legal basis for the position of Assistant City Manager, I think this is right, in proper. And I think it's something that you guys can do. I think the order of events was probably incorrect here, but it is something that can be rectified going forward. And I ask that you could do that for Mr. Fry and for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Walworth, Word Three. I know you're late. Just have a couple of points. We need to have a code enforcement officer. Since the individual in charge of the department is no longer enforcing violations of the code herself, we need to have a appointed individual then to do the work. Because the other day, there was beautiful science outside the city welcoming to the city and halfway down South Hall, there was a commode sitting on the curb. So is that a way to welcome people into town? Fairway. Second thing, I have went two and a half years having to deal with animals at large. No help while the city pleads. Courtesy of somebody getting bitten and other avenues being taken, it is finally going to go to court. Not only that, but the prosecutor internally has asked me for all my pictures, which are legal in the court of law as identification things pertaining to the animals at large. It all revolves around the same parties that are involved with Tent City. So it kind of looks like a collusion to not take any action against them people. And there has been cases that their officers have seen the thing, contradictory to what the chief said up here a couple councils ago. He said his officers had not observed any of the dogs running at large. I have a case report with me from two years ago where they had escorted the dog home and informed Missy that the next time she's going to get a ticket, which never came about. Sometimes they don't even show up from a 911 call. And sometimes, as in case the other day, a police officer was aggressively charged by one of the dogs from up there. And so all he did was a minor thing, which did not include what was found during the dog by the end of the investigation, that the dogs were not licensed. And then the officer, another time the part kind of came for a report and he did not give them a ticket because they didn't know going nowhere. And as he was leaving, he said, you guys are safe now because all the dogs are home. Have a good day. Few days later, the dogs were out running rampant again. And some of them are aggressive, so you don't know what you're going to be facing when you come around the corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? I will close the podium and we will move on to the city manager's report.
Thanks Mayor Proton. You did have at your, your council places the Walk to Remember flyer for the 18th Annual Walk to Remember. Again, as Mayor Proton had indicated in the proclamation, Sunday, October 12th at 1:00 PM at Owens Park Pavilion, they will be hosting that 18th Annual Walk to Remember. Just encourage those to attend. And they do have a number to reach out to kind of RSVP for the event. So if anyone hearing this is of interest, we can get that posted probably on the city's website to see if there's folks out there. Just a couple of quick things to mention. So we've started our Toys for Tots holiday campaign again. So the city of Hillsdale is once again trying to support the U.S. Marine Corps Reserves Annual Toys for Tot Drive. My survey is a designated collection point. A donation box is located just below the city clerk's service window where new unwrapped toys may be dropped off. All toys collected remain in the community to benefit local children. Donations will be accepted through December 4th. Also in regards to the clerk's office, this is in regards to voter registration and absentee ballot reminders for the upcoming election. The city clerk's office has completed mailing out the absentee ballots to all registered voters on the permanent absentee ballot list. Those who have not yet received their ballots should expect delivery from the U.S. Postal Service soon. Registered voters who are not on the permanent absentee ballot list may apply for an absentee ballot at the city clerk's office through 4:00 PM on November 3rd, 2025. There is still time to register to vote in a special local election on Tuesday, November 4th. The deadline to register by mail or online is October 20th. However, qualified electors may register to vote in person at the city clerk's office through Election Day. As a reminder, the city voters will elect a new mayor to serve a one-year term until November 26th election. Two candidates that will appear on the ballot is Matthew Bentley and Scott Sessions. And then lastly, just as the mayor also mentioned, the proclamation for Public Power Week. Just want to recognize the value of public power in the city of Hillsdale. It is an opportunity, Public Power Week, to recognize the many benefits Hillsdale residents enjoy as members of the public power community, one of more than 2,000 communities across the nation. Public power utilities are locally owned and operated. And this local control provides clear advantages, including greater reliability, a strong focus on safety and significant cost savings to the customers. Couple of those things I want to dive into a little bit more detail, but those savings are especially evident with the Hillsdale Board of Public Utilities. Thanks to sound management practices and dedicated staff and strong oversight, the VPU Board of Directors and City Council. Hillsdale's local electric rates remain well below the state average. According to the U.S. Energy Information Administration, the average residential electric rate in the state of Michigan for July 2025 is over 20.56 cents per kilowatt hour. In comparison, the VPU's standard residential rate is 10.74 cents per kilowatt hour, nearly half the state average. And that was confirmed in another study I saw today. So we not only have greater reliability, which studies have shown, but we're also, in this case, half the state average. So there's a very large benefit to being a public power utility. And so if you see a lineman out working or in the, in the field or in the stores, please thank them for their service and congratulate them on Public Power Week.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the manager? Yes, Councilman Soha.
I appreciate the VPU's electric rates.
Yeah, some, some people don't. I'm not exactly sure why that is after hearing. Okay, anything else? Alright, we will move on to council comment. I would like to go through Pastor Press's list here to, to answer his questions. I have 10 points written down, but if I missed anything, feel free to tell me. Does the city council have the authority to terminate the assistant city manager position? Well, I'll try to answer the ones I can, but correct me if I'm wrong. No, the city council has the authority to fire the city manager, the city clerk, the city treasurer, and the city attorney. I believe those are the only four positions we have direct hiring authority over. The city engineer, for example, we confirmed his appointment today, but he can only be fired by the manager. Under normal conditions, if the manager position is vacant, then the mayor or acting mayor can fire with council approval, which in my opinion is how it should be for the manager too. Would he fill the city manager's role? No, if the city manager position is vacant, we have 60 or 90 days to appoint an acting city manager. That is a separate appointment. There is no line of succession. I believe it's different from the treasurer and clerk where the treasurer and the deputy treasurer and the deputy clerk, if we have one, they would automatically, I believe, fill that role in the interim. But it is not the case with the city manager's assistant. Is there precedent for this? The last I can remember would be, I think Linda Brown was an assistant city manager before she was city manager. That would have been 2012-ish?
Yes, it, it would have been at that spot right in the timeline, 2012, 2013, because then she again became the city manager and she was temporarily just before Doug Terry filled in before Dave came. And before that, there had been assistant city managers, I think, pretty much in succession before that. They had somebody else appointed as assistant city manager.
Thank you. Is there precedent in the, or is it in the charter? No, as I said, the clerk and the treasurer are allowed a deputy that they can appoint. There isn't one for the city manager. And I, I did reach out to Mr. Thompson and I forgot to respond to your inquiry with his response, which I apologize for. Can you reiterate the discussion there? Why is this not a deputy like the clerk or the treasurer? Or I think you could hire as well, right?
Yeah, in effect, it's, it's basically better described as just an assistant to the city manager. So it's just the city manager having someone, assigned duties to someone to provide assistance to him, whereas the clerk and the treasurer actually are given authority to, within the city charter and the ordinances of the city to hire deputies and to delegate some of the duties to those deputies in their absence. The city manager can't do that. There is nobody that can take the actions on behalf of the city manager. So it's not the same as like having a deputy.
What, how does that work in practice though? I mean, okay, can't sign a legal document that requires the city manager's signature. So going into the fifth question, the supervisory nature of the role.
They have no supervisory authority whatsoever over anyone.
I mean, can they, could the assistant send an email that says, on behalf of the city manager, do this?
No. I mean, I guess the city manager can send an email. It strikes me that that's not something you would necessarily have the assistant do. I suppose you could have the assistant send something to someone and say, you know, Dave, the city manager, has requested that you do the following or is asked that you do the following. If you have any questions, you need to contact him when he's back or when, you know, whatever.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what in practice the difference between a deputy and an assistant is.
So an assistant would be, it could be a clerical person, right? In effect, that's sort of what it is, right? It's someone who has no administrative authority. They can't tell you what to do and if you ignored what they told you to do, then they nec- can't necessarily get in trouble for that, alright? So they can't be reprimanded. But I suppose the thing would be, they might want to check and make sure that that's something that the city manager wanted them to do, because they may get in hot water eventually with the city manager who may go and, and say, okay, well now I want you to do it, right? But yeah, I mean, that's sort of how you have to think about it. It's not, it's not creating a position. It's basically assigning duties to provide help to the city manager and sticking, I suppose, a title on it, which might make some importance in terms of, you know, being able to book a nice resume if you're saying, or being able to at least indicate the capacity in which you're communicating with people.
Okay, and this, if I recall correctly, comes from the section of the Code of Ordinances on the Administrative Service where it gives the manager basically carte blanche to assign any duty to any department head. It doesn't even necessarily have to be connected to their job description in that way. They are allowed to delegate.
Yeah, so they're allowed, a department head is allowed to hire their staff, right? The assistant city manager, to the extent that's what you're calling it, isn't a department head.
Right.
I mean, they're just someone that, that gets hired to perform work in the department. In this case, that he's been assigned duties to assist the city manager with performing his office, no differently than if Jason hires someone to plow streets. You know?
Right.
Same kind of thing.
Okay. Six, council participation. I don't think we received any advance notice of the job change. Did anyone? No. Is there a contract? I assume it's just the same employment contract with a new job description.
He's just a, a city employee, there's no contract.
And, and they're all that will, just normally I will employ. Is there a job description?
Not for the assistant city manager.
Okay, so no job description, no pay scale. Did council receive? No. So we didn't participate in the hiring, did we receive notice? Not until the next meeting. I wrote down continuing position, but I can't remember what that was referring to. That was the last one. Maybe that was connected to would he fill the city manager's role? Did that answer your questions?
If, if, if the gaps in employment are filled in the city staff, can you continue in that?
Oh, thank you, okay.
That was the idea.
Once we have a full-time city manager, will he be returned to his old duty?
The answer is potentially yes. That would be something that would be discussed with council as, you know, depend, would depend on the situation. So right now, he is assisting administratively because I'm spending more time at the meeting with you because of vacancies with the water and sewer superintendent and the electric superintendent. Once those roles are filled, you know, there, there could not, it might be, the work structure might go back to the way it was. So there is a potential for that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, so I, those were the 10 points that I had written down. If you want to talk to any of us or the manager afterward, happy to help. My, my general point on this would be, I think the charter needs to be rewritten so that the council has oversight over all of the department heads as well as the officers. And ideally, they would be accountable to the mayor as well, but that's a broader discussion. Code enforcement officer, Mr. Walworth's point, I totally agree. I don't know if we should have a motion. I want a dedicated code enforcement officer, someone whose sole job is to get in the vehicle. It's really asking a lot from the assessor to have to do this job in addition to everything Dogs running at large, I do see this problem a lot. I called about a month ago for one that was zigzagging across Broad Street and the officer came and he's like, yeah, I don't have the, the equipment that I need to be able to catch and restrain the dog. And it was, you know, a fairly large animal. My kids are out playing, so I don't know if public safety wants to address that. What do, what do our guys need to be able to address those calls? That's all I had for council comment. Anything else from council? Yes, Councilman Flynn?
I have a couple of procedural questions, I guess for lack of a better phrase for Tom. With the upcoming mayoral election, the charter states that following an election, we have a meeting the following Monday to swear in the new officers. Although last year we had to wait six days for absentee ballots and mail-in things to come in, and so we just swore everybody in at the next regular meeting. Are we doing that again this year? Do we have to have the meeting the Monday following the election? Can we make a motion to move it to the next general meeting since it's just one position instead of five?
As I recall, the answer to that is no, because it's in the charter. So it would require a charter amendment. The issue, so in effect, what we did last time is you would meet and then adjourn it because you can't swear anyone in, because the reason you have to wait is they changed state law. And now, so the way the statute reads, the clerk's office, the county clerk, can't certify the results until after your charter deadline to swear people in occurs. So in effect, due to a change in state law, you can't comply with that because you can't swear anybody in because you don't have anybody swearing.
Okay. So we will have a meeting the following Monday and Monday after the election to.
To adjourn.
To adjourn until the next.
And continue the meeting at the, before the next meeting to swear those folks.
Okay. With the new mayor, regardless of who it is, obviously they get the oral powers, I'm assuming. So would we. So would we then have a new election for Mayor Pro Tem? Or would Mr. Palladino remain Mayor Pro Tem until the end of twenty twenty-six?
We decide that.
We decide that?
I believe the Mayor Pro Tem election is after every regular state election.
That's what I was, I was just double, I was just double checking.
To tell you the truth without looking at that, I don't know that I can tell you definitively. I want to take a look, but so the issue you have here is right, you're filling of, the remainder of a partial term.
Right.
My initial inclination would be that you would leave the Mayor Pro Tem as is. You have that organizational meeting, um, and elected the Mayor Pro Tem. And I think the Mayor Pro Tem stays until, um,
Okay.
You get to the position where you would do that.
We do have Mr. Horsey. I mean, we lost the mayor, stepped in, we instantly had Mayor Pro Tem. He, he didn't continue.
But, but that's, but that's because you had a resignation at that time. And you needed someone to fill the Mayor Pro Tem seat, or the mayor's seat, and to be the Mayor Pro Tem, right?
So what when council select from Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll have to look at that to tell you whether or not. That's what I just said, because I can't definitively say when we're the other without going back and looking at it. Because me trying to remember that from memory is a bad way for you to rely on.
Oh, section four point five. The mayor and council shall, at its first meeting following each regular city election and after the newly elected members take office, elect one of its members to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for a term expiring at the first council meeting following the next regular city election. Again, it comes down to, is this a special or regular election? Obviously, it's a special election. We've been calling it a regular election, but it isn't.
Well, it's a regular state election, but it is not a regular city election.
Right.
Right? So it is a special election. That's why I said, I think that the difference is that you're only filling whichever one of you, uh, were to prevail as mayor, would only be filling the remainder of a partial term. But let me take a look at it and give it a little bit of thought.
Okay, then the, the other third question I had was, if Mr. Bentley is elected mayor, now we have his position to fill. Would the election process for Ward Two councilperson be August, November? Or would it be May, August?
It would be May because it's your next regular election, regular state election, based on that schedule that the state has. So yeah, it'd be sort of what you did this year, except for the first election would be in May. If you only had two people, then that would be the election. If you had more than two, then that would be the primary, and August would be the regular election.
Thank you.
I just, I will be voting no if there is a resolution to that effect. The city charter is very clear. We can have two elections per fiscal year. We had one in August, we had one in November. May is still the current fiscal year, so I will not be supporting that. That's why, that's what I was saying, you know, eight months ago when we had this discussion.
Well, I was, I was just trying to make it clear so that we knew as these things came about, so we weren't sitting here a day or two ahead of time going, what do we do? And then waiting for council to figure it out. So that's why I was kind of thinking that we could get our ducks in a row.
Thank you.
We're up for three hours, but council meeting ends in three hours.
Bye, thank you.
Then I would make a motion that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, Councilman, thank you.
I believe the term you left before is big spaghetti mess. Um, we made very clear that Mayor Pro Tem is going to be Mayor Pro Tem for two years regardless. We did that when we voted for him. And if I'm not mistaken, we reiterated it very clearly when we voted to have this big spaghetti mess election. So yeah, it's very likely change. Mayor Pro Tem will be, remain Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so it's just double checking, just, you know, get all of our ducks in a row and try to get rid of the spaghetti.
Yeah, well, it's going to take, it's going to take charter reform. Because it's a, it's a mess. And that's why we keep doing this, because the dog contradicts each other. And so we need to work on that.
Thank you, Councilman Bentley. Any other comments?
Uh, yes. No, one more question for, uh, city manager. Um, is the airport manager going to be here, uh, at our next meeting? We, he, he hasn't given his official presentation to us.
Um, I can ask if he's available that night, yes.
Thank you very much. Any other council comment? Councilman Flynn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion for, and Councilman Flynn, seconded by Councilman Soha. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The I seventh meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for being here. I'm sorry for those who work full-time.